I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of agenda, three one. Since I need a motion and a second for the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, three two, action items from closed session. This is the approval of the May 23 meeting minutes as well as, it's just May 23rd, isn't it actually?
Yes.
And the semi-annual review of closed session. Need a motion and a second, please. Ashley?
Fitz?
Yes.
Duras?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes. Okay, communications. Oh, we gotta do that separate?
You have to read that?
Oh, that's right, Ashley. All right, all bear with me as I read this half a page document. Motion to approve the board's semi-annual review of unreleased closed meeting minutes and to keep sealed the closed session minutes from the last six months, specifically January 24th of 19, February 28th of 19, March 7th of 19, March 13th of 19, March 20th of 19, April 25th of 19, as the need to maintain confidentiality continues to exist. The need for confidentiality also still exists as to all remaining closed meeting minutes listed on the attachment, six-month review of closed session written minutes and audio recordings older than 18 months, 1998 through April 25th of 2019, to protect an individual's privacy or the district's interest and shall remain sealed unless previously opened. And to extend nondisclosure of the recordings of the closed session portions of the board's closed meetings set forth below for the reasons that the need to maintain confidentiality continues to exist, therefore keeping the audio recordings sealed for closed session meetings, recordings older than 18 months, specifically July 24th, 2017, and September 26th, 2017. The written minutes of these meetings also remain sealed and must previously open.
Barry?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Duras?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes. All right, now for communications. We got some state track champions in there.
Hi, good evening. Jesse Burr was unable to be here tonight, so I let him know that I would, it would be my pleasure to introduce our coaches at the middle school as well as our middle school athletes that did so amazingly well at the state track meet this past night. So I will let Max Wallit, Lisa Bostrom, and Coach Verenski to come on up and tell us all about the wonderful things that you guys accomplished here.
Hey Steph, this is about you, not us. Come on out. All right, well first, I want to thank coaches, Coach Verenski and Coach Bostrom, the two that are here. You guys are awesome. They work with kids great and have trained these kids, and so we can't thank you enough. Great job. And then Ms. Lainen for your support at GMS, making sure the kids had sack lunches ready to go for our sectionals and state. That was great, thanks for your support. And all the parents that get their kids to and from practices when they're injured, you take care of them. And so obviously you're a tremendous part. Tiffany, thank you for your leadership this year. I really enjoyed talking to you and you were a big influence this year. So, we know that our eighth grade boys won state this year, so if you're an eighth grade boy, step forward. We know our seventh grade girls got third this year, so if you're a seventh grade girl, step forward. And now I'm going to go through the individual accomplishments. I'm going to start with Kaitlyn Lainen. For the first time ever in the history of the IESA, you've got a kid that won the 100, the 400, and then the 200. And real quick, that means that at sectionals, she had to run four, and the 200 is the next race. And so that is just crazy, but we knew that she was up for it and she did it. And she battled through injury all year long. And without, once again, parents and a hundred other people that kept her legs good and herself, taking care of herself, she was able to do this and battled through adversity. Caitlin, awesome job. She set the school record in the 100, the 200, and the 400. She tied the school record with 12.4 in the 100, 200, 25.7, and 458.8. So then, other individual accomplishments. Drew Verenski, third place in the 800. Ian Holmeyer. Ian Holmeyer, who's not with us, he got fourth place in hurdles. I don't see Carly. And she set a new school record in the 800 at state, getting fourth place with a time of 222.6. Austin Harding at pole vault, got sixth place. Jayden Saunders got sixth in the one and the two, and got a school record in the two with 23.7. Our relays this year, our 4x2 eighth grade boys, state champs and a school record with 136.7. The same group that won the 4x2 at state, won the 4x4 at state. Same four boys. And these boys, they have taught, everybody up here has taught. And I always, we always kind of say, what are eighth graders are our leaders? You know, we let them lead and we're going to have as good a season as our eighth graders have. Or, you know, as good as our eighth graders are, that's as good as your season's going to be. And this has been one of the best, if not the best, eighth grade classes we have ever had. Not winning, leadership, you know, adversity. Just, you know, your body tone, your body language, everything was great. And they showed people how to have fun while winning and working hard, and that's what it's about. So eighth graders, great job. I appreciate that a lot. So the 4x2 school record, state champs, the 4x4 state champs, and it's our first time to win state in the 4x4 with the eighth grade boys. So it's fun to see. Our eighth grade girls 4x4, so Carter Damm, I'm sorry, Carter Damm, step forward, I'm going to call your name. Galaski Gleis, Drew Verenski, and Jayden Saunders. Okay, that's our 4x2. Our eighth grade 4x4, we have Mia O'Neil representing that, Savannah Bell, Carly Wilcoxen, and Callie Gayton was part of that 4x4. And they set a school record with 417.7 and got second place at state. And our seventh grade girls, just step forward, I'm going to call your name. Rhyming Law, Lydia Guerency is not here, Ava Gorey is not here, and Caitlin Lane, fourth place at state. Great job, girls. So, it was an awesome year. Nine school records down, got first and second. It just goes to show every year what kind of families and what kind of kids that we get here at Chad and Glenwood. And it's awesome to see and we get to be lucky enough to watch it. So, great job, guys. Thank you. Now you guys do not have to sit through the rest.
But you guys are more than welcome to stay.
I think I got a game to play.
You already said.
I'll find one.
All right, moving on to section 4.2 Kids' Heart Challenge.
Thank you very much. I'm Catherine with the American Heart Association, and I cover 19 counties as youth director in Central and Western Illinois. And so I try to pick four or five schools to go to a school board meeting and express my gratitude and appreciation for what a great job a lot of schools are doing partnering with me. For 39 years, we had the Jumper for Heart program that a lot of you guys probably even did when you were kids. And just this past school year, we had a huge upgrade for our 40th birthday and we changed our name to Kids' Heart Challenge. And by doing that, we also were incorporating social-emotional learning and was trying to do a big modernization of our partnering with schools. The new Kids' Heart Challenge also includes a new grant program, more dollars given as givebacks to schools for P E equipment. We also had a new Flex Dollars back to schools that they could use for anything health-related in terms of healthy snacks or buying any kind of equipment that they wanted. Schools can still do Jumper for Heart if they want to, or Hoops for Heart, but with the name change. It broadened it out. I had schools doing Yoga for Heart and Warrior Dance, and it just kind of broadened everything. There's even an art component or music if schools want to go that route. So it's just kind of opening everything up. And it was our first year, so we're still trying to figure out all the possibilities, but it's all really tremendous. The kids this year picked a challenge to either move more minutes every day, substitute water or milk for a sugary beverage, or do a kindness every day during the Kids' Heart Challenge. Those were the three heart challenges that they had to pick from this year. And as we're moving forward, we're going to incorporate even more of the social-emotional. And prevention of heart disease is our whole goal with getting kids as young as we can. 80% of heart disease, the research has shown us, is preventable. 20% is genetic, but 80% are lifestyle choices. So when you get the kids at the youngest ages, you can really make an impact on their long-term heart health and stroke prevention. So, here today, I also wanted to tell you that I'm in my, this will be my third school year, and as I'm getting my feet all wet, figuring it out, I'm doing more wellness. And a nurse at Glenwood High School, Michelle Lowry, reached out to me and I'm going to be doing some wellness that'll be more geared towards the staff of Ball Chatham across the school district. She wanted, she's really interested in that and wants me to bring some wellness programs. So I'm going to be doing that for the first time this year and getting my curriculum figured out this summer. So I wanted to let you know that. And I wanted to, tonight, recognize four schools and teachers that partnered with me this year. Maddie Gibson from Glenwood Elementary, Pam Hogan from Glenwood Intermediate, Melissa Fowler from Chadon Elementary, and Max Wallit from Ball. And I didn't tell any of the teachers I was coming tonight because I didn't want them to come in on their summer and go to a school board meeting. I should have warned Mr. Wallit that I had no idea he was going to be here. So, these are just tremendous teachers. I, like I mentioned, I cover 19 counties and the Chatham schools have got tremendous teachers, superior to everywhere else that I go, and they have such a passion for the health of the kids. And so I wanted to recognize them. I have a certificate of appreciation I want to give to Dr. Wood. And that's all I had, but I wanted to thank you. I know that I could sit through there, so I think I'll go around. And our theme this year was Heart Heroes, so that's our. Thank you, thanks for letting me come. Thank you very much.
Okay, four three, citizens the opportunity to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. Seeing none, moving on to section five, consent agenda items. Would anyone like to pull any of those?
Yes. Six five one, I want to pull.
We're on five, right?
Okay.
So five one through five nine. Anyone want to pull any of those?
No.
Then I need a motion.
Second.
Motion is to approve five one through five nine.
Jesse, you got it on there. Do you send it? All right, Duras?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes. Moving on to section six, personnel consent items. Does anyone wish to pull any of these items? If I have one. Six five one, please. Anyone wish to pull others?
Yes. Assistant principal. I pulled two, I know that Sarah's and...
See, that is...
Six three eight. Okay, so we're pulling six dot two eight, six dot three eight, six dot five one. Any other items equal? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve items six dot one through six dot two seven, and then six dot two nine through six dot three seven, and six dot three nine through six dot five zero, and six five two through six five seven. Second.
Bryant?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Where do we start?
Let's, well, let's just take your word. Six two eight and six dot three eight. Doug, if you want to comment on both of those together or have discussions?
No, no discussion. I just wanted to ask Sarah to please stand so we can embarrass her just a little bit. Sarah Downs, we are very fortunate. I mean, I just have an excellent educator, I think those of you who have seen her in the classroom knows what she does. It's very tough in this situation because here you are in the classroom, doing great things. And now you're going to come into administration and you're going to continue to do great things. So, we can't wait to have you on board, and I know the staff is looking forward to having you there as well. So, I just want to take a moment and congratulate you on your position. Wish you the best of luck and look forward to working with you in administrative as well. We also have, at the high school, she was unable to be here, and that's Maria Swor. Although it wasn't pulled, I do want to make reference to Maria, actually, who's coming to us from Peoria School District. And so, she'll be joining the high school staff, we're looking forward to her coming as well. We also have Maggie Geikendall, who is going to be our special ed director. She was unable, unfortunate, during the summer. When you make those hires and decisions, people have plans and are unable to be here. But she's excited, we'll begin work on Monday, and she can't wait to get here, so we'd like to help her as well. And Mike, I believe Mike is here, Mike is on? Mike, we are very fortunate, Mike is joining the staff at CES and is going to fill the role of assistant principal. We're very excited there, I know the team is excited there. We have a new principal, now a new assistant principal, and he comes to us from Rochester. And so, I know it's not that far away, very familiar with the community, and as well as our other administrative team members. We welcome you and thank you for coming to Ball Chatham.
Thank you.
Just to make it official for those folks, before we go on to our discussion on six five one, let's get a motion to approve six dot two eight and six dot three eight. Second.
So moved.
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Duras?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
All right, discussion on six dot five one, Scott?
Briefly, I just want to, I guess I'll raise an objection to the approach of lumping all of these contracts in together. At the very least, I think we should consider the one-year contracts as part of a group and three-year contracts as another group. I mean, you know, if you look at the rest of the consent agenda, we break them out, positions out individually, it's not clear to me why it's done as a group. The second issue is, I have no substantive objections to these contracts, but then I also don't have enough information, this particular board member doesn't have enough information to really know what the differences are between the current contracts and the ones that we're approving. So, I just wanted to state, I guess, for the record, my objections to this particular approach. And I will say that it's possible that I didn't get that information because I'm a new board member, but, you know, going forward, if I'm going to be asked to vote on things, I need the information.
Any further discussion on six dot five one? Need a motion to approve six dot five one.
Fitz?
Yes.
Duras?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Barry?
No.
Bryant?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes. All right, old business, section seven, seven one, FY19 amended budget.
What I'm asking the board tonight to do is to approve the amended budget as it was presented at the last board meeting, there have been no changes since this amended budget was presented.
I need a motion to, is there any discussion on this?
Just one point of discussion. It's not necessarily related exactly to this budget, but since we were talking about the budget, I just wanted to make a note here that I had some good financial news for the district. Standard and Poor's recently raised the Ball and Chadon School District's long-term debt rating from double A negative to double A, and it also stated that the outlook on all ratings is stable. They pointed to, quote, "A strong commitment to a conservative budget management targeting a larger reserve balance to reduce reliance on state federal support," as keys to that improvement. And so, I just wanted to make note of that, since we were talking about the budget, and congratulate everyone that had a hand in making that happen, I'm sure it was a team effort. So, I look forward to helping ensure that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we're very excited about that.
Yes, good job, so congratulations.
As you stated, it's been a work.
That's all I had.
Any other discussion, seven one? Okay, we need a motion to approve, second.
Duras?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes. Seven two, mechanic supply bids.
Good evening. Annually, we put out bids for materials we use in our mechanic shop. We began this process because we have so many items that we buy that we were sort of all over the board. So, we started putting out a bid in order to try to manage our costs. And the way that we do this is, we list all the items and within our bid, we indicate we're going to pick individual items. We won't just pick one vendor, because one vendor may be, can get low pricing on certain supplies and another vendor on different supplies and certain... We couldn't just pick one vendor to do all supplies. So, what we've done here is, within the bid, we highlighted the items in yellow for the vendor that we would like to purchase from for that supply. In the middle of this first page, there's one that's highlighted in orange. That vendor actually notified us that they listed an alternative filter which we don't use. So we indicated it as non-responsive because it's not something that we would purchase. But we failed to highlight the other vendor that bid, so that's a, not a typographical error, but a clerical error, we just didn't get it highlighted. So, we're going to ask you to select a rush vendor for that product. And then, on the next to last page, the one highlighted in orange there. This vendor does this pretty much every year. We ask for the metal stop signs that go on the buses when we have to replace them. Every year, they bid a vinyl sticker to simply go on the ones that we already have. That's not what we're looking for. So, again, even though that looks like it's the lowest price, it really is not an item that we were asking for at the end of it. So other than those two items, we're asking you to approve the selected products under the selected vendors.
Questions? Any discussions or questions? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve, seven two.
Barry?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Duras?
Yes.
Fitz?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes. Seven three, cleaning and rental services bids.
We have, we have been using the same vendor for quite a few number of years. We had an ongoing issue with systemic price increases, even though our most recent contract has eliminated those price increases. They continue to do that and we've had monitored that contract for the last three years. So, Charlotte and I began speaking about how we might eliminate that and elected to go out for a bid for this service. It includes our kitchen aprons, our mops, mats, uniform shirts for our mechanics, and so on. So, this is the bid tab. And again, there's no single vendor that is low in every aspect. But, this first year, even though we have the ability to select product by vendor in our bid document, we are of the opinion that we would recommend clean uniform service as opposed to the current vendor we have. At the end of the day, they are not the low bidder. They are about $2,100 high annually. And we have tracked the, can you open that presentation? We have, we have worked with that vendor for a long time. We understand what they need. Go ahead, this, I'm going to stop here. This is the process that we've been through. We issued an RFP in February, we had a pre-submission meeting with all the interested vendors. We accepted the RFPs on May 1st. We reviewed samples of the product. We didn't want to jump in with another vendor and not have the products that were in the same caliber. Both those products were reviewed by Mike Dobbs for Estadio Stuff and Chad Cafeteria Supplies. We reviewed contract language. We also didn't want to end up with a vendor who had a contract that was very non-district friendly. We're at the point now that we're going to make a recommendation, Ashley. Services are scheduled to start July 1st. Couple of just industry terms, in case you have a question, go ahead, Ashley. This is the bid tab, go ahead, one more. This is the anticipated weekly expense by vendor. Cleanings about $580, air mark is about $530. Sent ons was substantially higher, $1,400 or something. Go ahead. This is what we've experienced over the last 10 years with our air mark vendor. We have, we've had this sort of very cyclical issue with them as a vendor, as a partner. We have systemic and organizational increases year after year. We get to a point, you can see a high watermark of $113,000. We get to a point, you can see a high watermark of $113,000 for a contract that shouldn't be $35,000, $30,000 to $35,000. Partly because of the way that their contract is written, they can make a price increase without notifying us. If we don't catch it on the bill and we've agreed to the price increase, then we can't go back and argue it later. It's a fairly common industry issue. In 2011, 2012, you can see the price increases, 50% one year and 47% the next. And then, in 2009, 2010, we went out to the vendor and said, hey, this is out of control, we're going to have to find a different vendor. They came back with substantial price reductions. 2013, they dropped prices by about 45%. Then about in 2014, they dropped them about 30 more percent, no, that's not about, yeah, about 38% the next year. Immediately following that, 2015, there was a 30% increase, the following year, there was a 38% increase. It's an organizational philosophy, that's how they grow their business. We're aware of it, we track it, we went back, pushed back, and 2016, pushed back, the contract's $31,000. The next year, there's another 6.5% increase, even though that contract limited to zero price increases. I still go through the invoices every month to make sure that we don't have hidden price increases.
So, are you saying they were violating the terms of the contract?
Yes, sir, yes.
And what recourse did we have, or should we have had for them violating the terms of their contract?
We.
By just making them pay, charge the correct price?
We've discussed some of those options, I know Charlotte talked about that, about whether or not we should file suit, cancel the contract.
If I could make a comment here, Jim?
Yep, please.
When I came in in 2016 and saw that we had a $40,000 contract that now is at like $68,000, I called Jim and we worked together. Unfortunately, Air Mark has that language in there to where if they increase their price and you don't catch it, you've agreed to it. So, we were stuck with that $68,000. They were very, very apologetic and said, please, give us another chance, we had, they had a million excuses for staff changes and what have you, and you'll notice the reduction in the next year at 31. And I have to compliment Jim that he has really stayed on top of every single invoice that's come in, but we really see this as a huge problem that we're not going to, they're going to continually try to do this, and so we just don't trust the vendor.
What's the term of the contract that will be signed if the RFP is issued? Two years?
So, is the flattening out here in 2017, 2018, have more of a function of an organizational change on their part, or are you going through the bills?
That's us going through the bills.
Is that type of change?
Every time there's an increase, we contact and say, take it off.
So, they actually have tried to increase and catch that and then have it correct?
Right. Can they be taken out of the contract, where they can raise the prices like that?
We did.
So, it's out?
This last contract, we took it out of contract, and they still did it.
How often is that, every month?
Yes, every month, there's something, some part of the bill that has to be corrected.
So, if we issued our RFP to this new vendor, we've got the language set such that they can't do that supposedly?
The new vendor has agreed to take our RFP requirements as their contract. They've agreed to not even offer us their standard industry contract, because it's a five-year contract.
So?
So, they've agreed to accept our terms in our RFP, and it says no price increases, no changes of inventory, nothing, no changes without a single point of authority within our district.
Two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
In 2016, when they were apologetic, sorry, sorry, give us another chance?
Go ahead.
At any point there, they offered to go ahead and feel so sorry that they gave us the $30,000 back?
No.
No, sir.
And we still had, we still had years remaining on the contract.
And if we go with this new vendor, I would hope that you're going to continue to scrutinize their bills?
Yes, sir. Yes, I don't think I'll ever get away from that, so yes, I think that's just part of what we have to do, but to me, it's one of those things, until you develop a trust level, this is just the opposite with our current vendor. We've developed such a level of distrust to what they do. The thing is, I don't even think it's the, it's not the local people. When we deal with the local people, they do what they can, it's an organizational philosophy.
And the difference between these two bids is roughly?
It's $2,142 a year. Now, that's.
One more time, $2,000 annualized?
Yes, sir.
So, on a two-year contract, the difference is 4K?
Yep, it's about $51 a week on a standard 42-week contract, because during the summer, we don't utilize the service, so we're using the service for about 42 weeks a year.
And that assumes that the current vendor would future increase the price that's not caused, and so that would lead into that cost saving?
Correct.
One other thing too, I mean, because this kind of stuck out to me, actually, I've been on board pretty well every, every contract that we're asked to approve is the lowest bidder, is all the same requirements, right? This has stuck out to me, but would you say that, you know, if it's the difference of $50 per week?
Yep.
You probably spend that much in time just scrutinizing the bill?
Not just myself, but when we were writing the specifications, I talked to the accounts receivable folks, they have a constant bad getting bills, and they're not right, and that.
So, those are what we call?
Absolutely, absolutely, none of that is included in it, that's just, you know, and we may have that going forward, so I'm not going to try to measure that and say that that's a plus or a minus either way.
A lot of expense would have cost to the district.
Right, right.
But there's termination, there's termination clauses of the contract if they buy it.
Correct, non-defiance. This is, this is just a quick summary of the current pricing that we have versus the RFP pricing that was submitted. It's about a 50% reduction in their pricing, and that was their argument of why they should be selected as the low bidder, but this is the same thing that they've done historically, year after year, gone it down.
Man story.
So, they're saying, wrap it up, Jim. So, I mean, I did have a good conversation with Air Mark and let them know that we were not going to be recommending them, and the five-minute conversation said, if you could have offered this price reduction, if you're a great partner and a good district vendor, we should have had those pricings from the get-go, or at least been somewhere near there, but to average an almost 50% decrease in pricing, that's profit, and we're paying them, we've been paying them tab.
It might not hurt to reach out, tell the people that we know that are using that vendor, I know we had an issue with patronage waste haulers in the dental field, we have waste man, waste haulers, and they do the exact same thing on their billing if you don't catch the increase after a party.
This industry is, it seems to be pretty cyclical, you've got clean people who go to Air Mark, and Air Mark people who go to Centos, and Centos people who go back, and they rotate, and a lot of it has to do with who's in the facility that's, you know, working that particular account, but it seems, there aren't a lot of players in the industry clean, they're based out of Highland, Illinois. They have regular rounds up here two or three times a week, the salesman lives in Chatham, I had, I didn't know him, the East Station here in Chatham does this area, so, I mean, we have some representation locally, I think we have issues, but based on, based on the amount of money and the issues we had, their recommendation is to go with a different vendor at this point.
I move to approve the recommendation to select clean uniform services.
Bryant.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Fitz.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes. All right, seven four, waste management and recycling services.
We recently went out to bid for the waste management recycling services, district requires, currently under a five-year contract, Republic is our current vendor, we went back out and bid, you know, we had two bidders come in, Republic and Centos, most responsive, most bitter this time around, and they, you know, they've done a pretty good job for us. I mean, it's kind of like, Air Mark, you have to keep an eye on, you have to keep a honest and stuff, but they've always responded to those, they've done well for us, so the recommendation is to, this is a three-year contract here, so the recommendation is for Republic Services.
Are our local and smaller vendors unable to handle the district?
I call, I call them a lot, every bidder in the area, I call them like Gary, they have no interest whatsoever in their contracts, that's what the problem is, waste management, I would think, and plus there's a price increase annually for waste management. This price, Republic Services, they've entirely, so that's per year for three years, no rate. It says up there that the $10 fee per, like, we get us, we have to call them in, in the summertime, because we stop services in the summertime, so we call them into a school and we have eight yard gun service, which is, you know, and we do do that periodically in the summer, because we're still generating trash, pretty fair price, they treat it just pretty well, actually.
All right, if there's not any further discussion, I need a motion to approve, need a second.
Second. Vera.
Yes.
Fitz.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes. All right, section eight, new business. Eight one, approval of consolidated district plans.
All right, currently we are eligible for and receive funding from five federal grants, Title I, Title II, Title IV, IDEA flow-through, which is for special education students in grades K-12, and then IDEA 3K, which is for students with special needs for ages three to five. Every year at this time, I'm required to submit an application for each of those grants to our State Board of Education. This year, Illinois is working on being more efficient, we created one kind of warehouse, it's called the Consolidated District Plan, in which we answer a series of questions that in the past were part of each of those five grant applications, that I kept answering the same questions for in each application. They've removed that from the application and made it a separate, one plan, kind of one-size-fits-all answer from the district of how we plan to utilize that funding. So, that is before you today, because that is required to have board approval. You've seen this in the past, in the past, it looks like the district title plan, the one piece that is very new is, we are now required to submit a foster care transportation plan. We worked a lot on that, because there are a lot of nuances to that and changes, on to make sure that our students are taken care of and that they are able to remain in a placement that is best for them regardless of what's happening at home. So, that is the one facet that is in that plan, and you can find that at the end. Would you see board approval to be able to sign our plan onto the State Board of Education?
So move. Second.
Barry.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Fitz.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes. Eight two, YMCA contract.
It's a renewal of the contract, it was up this June, it's a three-year contract with the YMCA that we needed to have another three-year contract renewal up. So, basically, it's the same, the only revision in this contract was the addition of the early release Wednesday, that one hour to be put in there as well, so that was it.
Is this the same organization that is charging parents $35 per child for one hour?
Yes, if you're not a member, or $30 if you are a member. But what we charge them is the facility's fee of $20 an hour at each of our schools.
And is there?
And that's what this is sort of about, isn't it? But, I mean, there are, they don't list their prices in there of what they charge their members.
Is there any reason why we have to renew for three years? I mean, has anybody talked to them about, you know, whether it's a good idea for them to charge 35 bucks a head?
No, we haven't discussed what they charge their members or their non-members. They were once, they were one of the few, really only that, well, there were two, the Chatham Recreation Center, we were the only two that would take drop-ins, so that was one of the benefits, I think, with renewing, and we've had a history with them, the YMCA has provided after-school care for years and years. You know, you can always go back and say, maybe we don't want a three-year contract, you know?
I don't know what that'll do to the program, though, that's why I asked.
We have about 120 kids right now utilizing that program after school, and at GES, they utilize a morning school program, before-school program.
So, I just want to make a comment here, I mean, at the last meeting, one of the concerns I expressed about early release programs, those parents kind of fall into this category where they don't use after-school care very often, and the $35 every week is a hardship on them if they use YAP. My son used the YAP program, it's a great program. The only thing I could mention is that through this contract, it looks like we're not charging them for that hour, and I know it's just a $20 an hour charge, so it's a minimal charge anyway, but I was hoping somebody from the YAP would be here, so I could suggest to them that maybe they look at that situation, these families that don't use it on a regular basis, and potentially think of a way to make a more cost-effective after-school solution for those families that don't use it every day, just need it for that one hour for the after-school.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, need a motion to approve? So move. I'll say.
Bryant.
Yes.
Fitz.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
Okay, eight three, Barry did.
It's our recommendation to approve urgent arms, they're a current vendor now, they were actually the only one that submitted a full-blown bid. We did have the option of also adding milk on to our current food contract, which is now going to be through Whole Foods through our co-op, but we would have had additional expense of buying the vendors, and never rather do something needed, not competitive, so my recommendation is to save urgent arms.
Move to approve the recommendation? Second.
Fitz.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes. Eight four, first reading policies, this is information only, correct?
Yes.
Brandon, you want to read all those? Okay, any discussion, comments on those?
Just reading, I talked about a couple of them briefly, we're being prepared to discuss them for fully next board meeting.
Okay, nine, communications, nine one, future board meeting dates. Everyone good? Yeah. Mike, are you good with the, I assume this came from you, or are you good with the July third date for, just checking to see if you're good for the billing.
We're going to hold this one at GIS, the same place we did last time, next month's board meeting is going to be Elder WSC.
Well, no, I was just asking about the dates, since.
Yes, sir. I am, yeah.
I'm good with it, you're in. I'll be here.
All right, nine two, citizens opportunity to address the board on any topic. Please come to the podium and state your name.
Hi, I'm Amy Crook, I'm here with Brooke Donald and Sarah Fowler, we also have another member of our group, Toni Traggy, she could be here tonight. We are here to discuss with you about Title I compliance and athletics at Volchamp School District. We have a packet here, I just cannot get through. Thank you. And it will show you the academic disadvantages and inequalities between male and female athletes, especially during the basketball season this past year. Academic disadvantages, girls practice from 6:00 PM to 8:00 or 8:30 PM while the boys practice. We have a packet here, I just cannot get through. Thank you. And it will show you the academic disadvantages and inequalities between male and female athletes, especially during the basketball season this past year. Academic disadvantages, girls practice from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 or 8:30 p.m., while the boys practice immediately after school. During the season, the girls had 14 weeknight games, which is Monday through Thursday. Seven games were home, seven games were away. We traveled to Landfair, Decatur, Jacksonville, Bloomington, SHD, Rochester, and Normal during the week. The boys had seven weeknight games, at which four were home, three were away, Jacksonville, Rochester, and Decatur. The boys had games on December 11th, 14th, and 15th, which was the week before finals. The girls had games on the 8th, 10th, 11th, 13th, and 15th, the week before finals. There's also major inconsistencies between the two programs. The boys play on Friday and Saturday nights. That is considered prime time. The girls have zero games on a Friday or Saturday night. The boys have cheer, band, and dance, attend all games. They attended one game for the girls' basketball team. The boys have zero Saturday morning or afternoon games. That's when the girls have all their games, and that's considered non-prime time. The boys did not have any busing transportation issues. The girls had three, two of which the coaches and district employees had to transport the team to and from the games. One of those games was in Decatur. That day, the boys had a game. The two buses showed up for them. One was for the team and one was for cheerleaders. The boys have never had to play in the small gym at the high school. This past year, the girls had played at least two games in the small gym. One of them was a conference game with our guys, Rochester, and that is our biggest rival in Eurobasketball. The boys played a non-conference game in the large gym. When we brought it to the athletic director, we were told that the girls prefer to play in the small gym and that the boys bring in more money. We don't get much student support. If you go back and look through Twitter, the Twitter account, I will tell you, from December 11th through the end, had 16 times they tweeted about the boys' basketball team. Not once did they tweet about the girls' basketball team. Also, the freshman team had a full schedule. The girls' team had two games. We do understand that some of the schools did not have a freshman team, but there was nothing looked into for an alternative game to be able to have those freshman girls play. We did go through the chain of command. On February 4th, we met with the athletic director, Mr. Burke, to discuss these disadvantages and inconsistencies. We told him we would like to see some Friday evening games for the girls. If the boys are away, the gym is empty, we could play. He told us that that week, he was actually going through and having a CSA meeting, and he would let us know. On February 9th, or on February 15th, we followed up with him to find out what happened, and he replied, and in there is verbatim the exact emails that we sent back and forth from one another. He said that he had misspoke, wasn't sure if it's going to actually work out. We replied back, asking more questions, and I just want to read this reply. "You high tried playing for a home girls' game on Friday at the same time they were away for a boys' game this year due to a makeup. Their AD said that the attendance was terrible for that thing. I don't like, see that as likely an option, is playing on Saturdays when two gyms are not available. It's an ongoing discussion. We felt like we got nowhere, so we moved on to the high school principal, Mr. Szysinski." We didn't know at that time that Mr. Szysinski is not a supervisor to the athletic director. We found out he's actually the superintendent of all Chatsfield District. But he did agree that he would look into it and ask other districts if they would be willing to, and he said there were many schools that would be willing to move the girls' games to Friday evenings, but that's as far as he could push the situation. Another matter that we want to push for is to have the band, bands, cheerleaders at some of the games, because when we contacted the band director, her contract clearly states that it is for boys' basketball only. That is a clear violation of Title Line Compliance. And then the other thing is, at one point in time, early bird PE class specifically stated in the Glenwood High School handbook that the class was for boys only. This has been removed, but we do know a female senior student who has tried to sign up for the class and has been denied. There is, in the packet, it will tell you, it'll show you about a lawsuit that has happened in Indiana for all of these things, because it is, there's all these inconsistencies and it's not Title Line Compliance. So what we're asking is that you please take a look at this. We would love to get a resolution to this by the next board meeting, and if not, we are willing to pursue it further. Do you have anything you want to add?
I would just like to add that we aren't just here as moms who wanted to have something to complain about or to have something to throw at you. We are here because our daughters noticed this situation. They noticed that they don't have the band or the cheer team or the dance. They noticed that they're going away on Saturdays and not playing at home on Friday nights. They noticed what the names on the scoreboard are still the boys' names, even on our senior night. So they noticed these things, and it's a little defeating, you know, a little discouraging, and I just feel like in, in current times, we need to do better for them. Thanks. Sarah.
I agree wholeheartedly. It's got to get better.
And, and one more thing, sorry. We, we know that this is a conference situation, and we know that we can't make all the changes right now here in Chatham, but we need to start making some efforts and some, you know, make some steps towards progress. And I think that'll make us all feel, you know, some, some resolution if we see some progress being made and some efforts being made.
We know it will take time, but if we could just see some games this year on a Friday night, a Saturday night, we could have the band there, because band cheer and dance drive up the attendance, and they truly do. If you go to a game, when the band's done, half the crowd leaves. So, you know, that would help out and give the girls somewhat of a packed gym.
Yeah, and that experience, you know, that group experience of all those different activities and, and clubs coming together to support them, that they, they got to experience once on senior night, so.
I was all fired up to just play out there.
Goes along with our theme.
I know, and we have, we have had some conversations, and I agree that it is a process, and we do need to make more progress, and I do believe that I'll be speaking with us about how we can work quicker and make this happen.
When, when is that schedule formulated for boys and girls' high school basketball?
I, I don't know what it's actu...
You all know it?
They already have a schedule out. They're working on the one for next year, but the schools that we have kind of spoke with to AVs and things like that are willing to make changes. I mean, our schedule does change even sometimes throughout the year because you'll find out if a team doesn't have, I mean, this past year, we had to move games because of two JV games being completely scratched because of a fight that happened. So there's always ongoing changes. So, I mean, Rochester, Springfield, Ohio, some of them said that they'd be willing to move.
Here it is, and not only that, part of it too, I know one of the discussions that I'd have, that's, I don't know exactly, but we talked about there are some schools that have a game on the same night or the same day.
And we can do that.
And so I know, I mean, that is something that we'll discuss.
You could have the boys and girls varsity.
Oh, the conference does play a role in all of that, but I, Mike, a little bit.
Yeah, I, I don't have the answers to that, but I was going to ask that question. This is just a proposal, but let's say there was a Friday night in which the younger, younger high school students played in the gym that's viewed as not as good, and then the girls' varsity and the boys' varsity played in the quote-unquote big gym. I'm just asking the question, would it, would it matter who played at what time? Would those need to be alternated? I just, I just want to understand.
I think, to be fair, it could be alternated, you know? You play, because you're going to have to alternate anyway because you've got coaching. So like, if it's the girls' varsity that plays first in the large gym, the small gym's going to have to be the boys' JV, and then have, you know, vice versa. But I'd like to see, you know, if the girls start first, the next time maybe the boys start first. I think that it'd help out with attendance on everybody in general.
Hey, Doug, as we discussed briefly earlier, I did look at the case from the, there's a summary of it that's attached to the packet. It's, the description's slightly incorrect. It says that the court found that the practice was in violation. It didn't actually find that there was a violation. Instead, they said that they had stated, the, the girls had stated a claim for a violation so that they could go ahead and proceed and try to prove it. But it is from the Seventh Circuit. It was out of Indiana, but the Seventh Circuit includes Illinois, so it's in our jurisdiction. So, you know, again, I'll, I'll forward that to you when I get it. On, on the bus issue, we've talked a little bit about that before on the board. There are general challenges with bus. I'll, I'll just say that I know it's not the same situation because the situation described the boys got in the cheerleaders too and the girls didn't. We encountered, my son plays soccer, and we had a situation last fall where I was one of the volunteer parents to drive the kids to Jacksonville. So, I mean, it is, that, that is a broader issue, I guess, I would say. But in that, I, I agree, in that instance, the, the boys apparently got a bus and the girls...
They got two.
I would just like to offer that there was a scheduling issue with the coach on one of the games with the, with the girls. So it was, we have challenges in transportation. I think there, there's no secret about that, especially in the spring and in the fall when there's a lot of activities.
I mean, the bottom line is, there's certainly, we have some, though we've made some progress, but, you're right, I have three daughters, so I can understand. I'll be having the conversation.
Would anyone else like to address the board on any, any topic at all? Here you go, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to be dishing by two.
I was going to be dishing by two.
Yeah.
Sweet.